This conference will now be recorded.
I've heard from quite a few people that they can't make it at noon because they're working.
Yeah, and you know, I think the idea was that we had one noon and one evening, plus the public hearing to try to just get different populations of people who may or may not be able to attend at different times. It looks like Duncan did tune in. Hi Duncan. Okay, well, I don't think we have anything else on our agenda. Is that true? I actually clicked on the link in the project website. I guess we can just get started with our meeting.
I think I need to turn my screen to show the agenda right. Just so you can catch all of the things. Let me see here.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, then open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Okay, then. We can move into our listening session. So our agenda does list presentation and public input forum on the draft environmental protection standards. It only lists the word presentation, just to kind of give us some room to be able to answer questions if there are any. There isn't actually a formal presentation associated with today's meeting. You know, we're really here to listen to public, any input that anyone wants to provide. We do have Taylor Newton from the Regional Planning Commission on the line as well. In case there are some technical questions that anyone has, he can help us to answer those. We are also collecting input by email, written email comment. And as well, we will have our official public hearing on the evening of the 20th of this month. So this isn't the last time. And with that, we can open up for anyone who has questions or comments. Monica, did you?
Can I ask one question, Jessica? There have been some letters and such that have been coming into us, and there was a letter to the other paper as well. And my question is, when those, there are comments that we can listen to, but there are sometimes either questions that are being asked of us so that people can help, you know, come to their public hearing comments. And so they're looking for some clarity. There are also some statements made that are either inaccurate or showing that they need more clarity. What should the process be in that case? Should we just continue listening and then keep those notes for after public hearing? Or should we be working to try to contact, clarify any misinformation or clarity needs prior to the public hearing?
That is a great question. So like in our last listening session, some people had some questions on things that we directly answered. Some of the emails that have had like specific questions, you know, I've tried to respond to, you know, if I can. But you are right, like we don't, we haven't had like, like direct response to a lot of comments. So I guess I'm not sure. I thought that we would, following the public hearing, go through and make sure we got anything we had missed. Michael, did you have something on that?
Yes, I think it would be good of us if we answered these emails, letters, and so on, as soon as we can rather than wait, because they are the specific these two listening sessions we've had. And I think they deserve a, I mean, I've read one or two of them. I haven't read them all, but seems like a lot of thought has gone into them. And so I think we owe it to those who sent them to give them a comprehensive, a fairly detailed answer if they have questions. And if they've made mistakes, to point out what those mistakes were and not wait until next month. I think we should do it as soon as we can.
And I would just add, if we do, it would be good if the answers and the clarification was also made public. Like if we're posting the letters on the city site, so everyone can see the questions, it would be good if any responses that corrected or clarified were also there. So it might help other people.
Sarah?
Yeah, I'll be quick. It's really to second the last two comments. I think those of us who have written responses would like to have them answered personally, but also if there are misconceptions that you think that submitters have to do that in public, not sort of after the fact, you know, in a laundry list, but as part of this hearing process. And that would permit them further dialogue from the senders of the letters. If they really feel differently or have a different perspective and want to reach back to you, you know, it's gotta be a lot of interaction, I think, at this point, because we got a very short timetable left now.
Marla, are you still on? Any chance?
Yep, I'm here. Sorry, camera, come on. I clicked it.
Maybe you don't need to answer this exact minute, but do you know if there's anything on our agenda for the 11th next Tuesday? The reason I say that is because I completely appreciate what everyone's saying here, but I only have so much capacity myself. And I don't know that some of these, that all of these questions should be answered just by me kind of privately. It feels a little uncomfortable, I guess, just, you know, to have one perspective. So I don't know if maybe we could go through some of the written comment that we've gotten as a group to create some kind of group responses. You know, I know that some of the people have come to listening sessions if they've had a question we've, as a group or with Taylor's help, kind of responded. So as far as I know, we didn't have anything scheduled on the 11th, other than, you know, we have our regularly scheduled meeting, but it didn't have a big agenda. Michael?
What I had gotten as direction from Paul, that he had planned for that meeting, is if there was any significant and helpful actionable feedback from last night's council session, that that would be something to do, something to address on the 11th. Other than that, he didn't have any particular plans. I did hear back from him today that he is expecting to be working towards the end of this week. So he may have some additional, but I suspect it'll take him some time to get caught up to.
Yeah, he and I, you know, the last time we talked, it kind of left it open in case something came up during this period that we would need to do. We also weren't sure where the study Duncan's sitting on the committee, the Swift and Spear study was going to be at, if maybe that would fall into that meeting. But I think that got scheduled for June at this point. Okay, Michael?
Yes, I would think that in order to make it efficient, if we can put it on for the 11th, that commissioners should read, should take these letters and make their comments and submit them to you beforehand so that we can cover it efficiently on the 11th. Everybody, you know, each commissioner will have made their, their comments or suggestions or answers beforehand. So we have it all on hand when we meet on the 11th.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I like the idea of just minutes being the response versus individual, because I do agree, Jessica. It's just too many and every answer can help somebody else. So I would say that having direct response with answers, we probably should avoid, because these are listening sessions. But then use the meeting and then use the minutes from the meeting to answer and provide the clarity. And I would also ask that, to Michael's point, we are clear on what information we're giving. I really think we should stick to not our opinions about positions, but if there is incorrect or lack of clarity on something, we stick to that and then leave the policy discussion to after the open hearing.
Yeah, Monica, I think that that's in line with what we've been telling people, that we weren't going to start talking about making changes until after we had closed the public hearing, you know, to make sure we had heard all the perspectives. So, you know, I think, I think, Marla, that sounds like a, what would be nice for our next Tuesday meeting. And I think that you and Betsy were already collecting, I've been sending you all the comments, so they should be relatively well organized. Okay. Good. Well, we're 13 minutes in. I want to make sure we have the actual listening time tonight as well. Duncan, one more thing?
Yeah, sorry, just to be clear, so for next Tuesday's meeting, are you asking us, obviously you want us to read all of the letters we've gotten, but in terms of responses, we're holding off sending you anything and then we'll discuss it after the listening sessions?
Um, I think if people had kind of responses on something that's, that's not correct or like an answer to a question, you know, people could start, individual commissioners could start to compile that information, but I don't think we want to say, I agree with this person's point because it's in line with my views. I think we'd want to say, I think this person's point is actually a misinterpretation of what's in the draft. Know the difference or?
And then the answers, the corrections, we will discuss at the hearing. So we can raise a question and say, I believe this one needs clarification, and then we can discuss that one in the meeting, correct?
At the next Tuesday.
Individuals. Okay.
Okay, good plan. Okay, so Patrick O'Brien, I think I saw your hand up.
Thank you very much, Jessica. I'll start by saying thank you for all the work that you all have done. And hopefully this process is coming to a close. I am going to basically refer to, there was a six-page outline that you put together, and it was on the city's website. My apologies, apologies, it's a little bit old, but I was just going to basically go from that and offer a little bit of advice as it relates to a few things. The big thing is that, you know, for those of you who don't know me, without giving up my age, I've been working in the permit world and the construction world for pretty much about 30 years. I'm familiar with pretty much all of the ordinances in every municipality in Chittenden County and also unfortunately very familiar with the state permitting process, working with the Agency of Natural Resources, Division of Fish and Wildlife and the Act 250 folks as well. But anyways, again, I just, I'm offering some advice and really what it boils down to is when you're somebody like me and you have different targets to hit as you maneuver through the permitting process, whether that is from the local level to the state level to the federal level, or it's inter-agency situations at the state level where they both may have jurisdiction, but they both have different levels of things you have to work with. So what I'm trying to say is that I think it would be really great if you could make a few tweaks to this, which I'm going to suggest, so you could be more in line. And specifically, I'm going to talk a little bit about wetlands. And, you know, in my perfect world, the regulations that are adopted would mimic that of both the Vermont Wetland rules and the federal rules administered by the Corps of Engineers. And so I'm going to touch on that, and then I would also like to touch on how, how some of these environmentally friendly things are delineated. And so those, those are my two objections. I'm going to first start of pretty much the broad-based one. And one of the categories that you guys speak about here is how boundaries are established. And I just want to throw a word of caution. I do think that, for example, under your, your 500-year floodplain and your, I think it may have been steep slopes, that you are, you're allowing for that measurement to be clarified by the applicant using LiDAR data. And for those of you who don't know what LiDAR data is, that's data that comes down from the sky at a, I think it's a 15-foot increment. It's used quite a bit, pretty much all the time now. With the exception of some instances where it's really important for you to send out a survey crew and do it the old-fashioned way and use instruments on the ground. And I have found more than once in my career where LiDAR data was inaccurate, and I don't want to get into the reasons why it was inaccurate, but it could be as simple as it was a very cloudy day. But anyways, the point I'd like to make is that if you're allowing LiDAR to be used, I also believe that you should allow for field survey to be used. It, it would be a decision the applicant could make. It would, it would, it would only mean the applicant has to spend more money doing the field survey work. But again, it could bring in that additional layer of accuracy.
Can I answer that question? Can I respond to that?
Yes, please. I was just that, yes.
So Patrick, if you look at the actual BiLAW document, page 44, it said, it's a large table in appendix E submission requirements. The very last row, you'll see that for steep slopes, it states that the applicant can use either field delineated or LiDAR-derived data as a part of their site plan. When I searched the word LiDAR in the actual document, I only see it in reference to steep slopes. With 500-year floodplain, we're, we're deferring directly to the FEMA maps, so the actual NFIP maps. And if there is uncertainty regarding a boundary on the 500-year floodplain, the applicant will actually have to work directly with FEMA to receive a letter of map amendment to prove that their property is outside that 500-year floodplain. You know, the type of data that FEMA needs to have likely is going to be field-derived. It's going to be a generally, I think, you know, I hear your concerns, but it sounds like you can really go field delineated. You can go either way with steep slopes and with 500-year floodplain. It's really going to be field delineated if you're trying to prove you're outside.
Yeah, and I concur with you, and I'm just making, just want to make sure that the, the proposed ordinance as written doesn't disallow those field delineations.
Agreed. Thanks. Keep going.
The other part is that I do see where in some hazard areas, there, we are allowed to introduce field delineations, for example, a wetland. But in some, we are not. And on top of that, for example, I believe it might be habitat blocks. And it says boundaries as shown as city natural resources map. And again, I would, I would vote for two things. That A, field delineation or verification, whichever adjective you want to use, is allowed for those hazards. Or that a field-specific delineation occur in a new, new map generated, and then that it be updated every five years. Now, we all know that, that the second option of field delineating and then updating every five years, that nobody has the time or the resources to do that. But for the life of me, I just, I just don't understand why you wouldn't allow for a field verification unless I'm missing something in a, in a field delineation was recently done, and that was put on the map that we are referring to in this, these regulations. To emphasize that point a little stronger, I can tell you that the three large projects that I'm working on, when, when you, when you go to the maps, whether it is a paper map that is part of a town ordinance, or whether it is a map that you can go on your computer, like, let's say, the Vermont Environmental Atlas, my experience is that pretty much 100% of the time, the map of reference will not match the field delineation. And sometimes, in my experience, they can be off by 200 or 300 feet. It's just, it's just the fault of the system, the mapping system. So I know we would all hate to see decisions or land planning done for any project based on an inaccurate map. No fault of the applicant, no fault of the municipality. And so I strongly encourage you to allow for field delineations in areas that you now are not proposing to. Okay. Third, really goes down to my comments about wetlands. Surely, I hope you don't paint me as somebody who likes to fill wetlands. I don't think there's a person, or maybe there are a few people on earth that go to a project site and say, oh, good, there's a wetland, let's fill it. It's not the, it's not the intent here. The intent really is to hopefully make these new set of rules fall in line with rules that govern the same hazard in other layers of the permitting process. And more specifically, right now, it's my understanding that there are a 50, there's an automatic 50-foot buffer around a class three wetland. I do understand that there's a mechanism to encroach on the buffer. But I just, what I don't understand is why we would propose a 50-foot buffer on a class three wetland, knowing that, for example, the Vermont Wetland rules don't take class three wetlands under their jurisdiction. And furthermore, knowing that not even the Corps of Engineers under the Clean Water Act require buffer zones to, let alone class three wetlands, they don't even allow buffer, require buffer zones to class two wetlands. And again, I recognize that you are enabling an applicant to weave through a process to get buffer zones reduced. But again, I don't, for the life of me, understand why or the importance of a buffer on a class three wetland. I do know that it wasn't that long ago that the state of Vermont Wetland rules did take jurisdiction over class three wetlands. And I also know the reason why they moved away. They may not say this, but I was involved in the process. And the reason was simple. You know, basically, to, to, to meet a, the definition of a wetland, you need basically three things. You need hydroic soils. And you need, well, let me back up. You need heavy soils. Or at least soils that hold water. Or you need two of these three. You need the heavy, the soils that hold water. You need you need water in your soils. And thirdly, you need a wetland plant. So if you have two of those three things, you have a wetland. And so what the state said, what to themselves and to the public at that time going through the process, is they recognized that because so much of the state lands qualify as wetlands, that they would, for lack of a better term, back off their regulations that in effect would allow people to impact class three wetlands because there were so many of them. So the long and the short of it is, under your proposed ordinance, I believe that you're saying if you have a wetland that's, if you have a class three wetland, that you're, if you're saying that that's larger than 30 square feet, then it's off limits. Excuse me. And so I would argue this. 30 square feet is less than two parking spaces. It's very small. If you have, if you live in South Burlington and you have a flat spot on your parcel or your lawn that is, holds water this time of year when we get a rain, if you didn't mow that, within a year or two's time, you would have wetland species growing and you would have a class three wetland. That is why the state stopped their jurisdiction over class three wetlands, because they're everywhere. So I would ask you this. I think it's important to, 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 again, align yourselves with the state in the feds, or at least one of the two. So if you're going to require that class three wetlands be managed, I would recommend that you be in line with the feds. Now, the feds, again, under the Clean Water Act, basically, under Nationwide Permit Number 39, allow up to one-half acre of class three wetlands to be impacted. So I would urge you to to consider raising the 30 square feet, which, in my opinion, is borderline ridiculous, to up to something more meaningful of one-half acre. Ironically, on the state level, Ironically, on the state level, if you have a Class III wetland that is one-half acre or larger, it is basically, it basically comes under jurisdiction of a Class II wetland. In other words, the state figured it out and is in line with the feds. And I would, I would urge you to do that as well. Monica, I see you have a question.
Sorry, Patrick, I just was going to point out, I don't know where the 30 square feet is coming from because the regulations call for 300 square feet.
I'm sorry, yeah, 300 square feet.
Okay, that's a little bigger than the parking lot.
Well, it actually is, it is actually right about what he described, two parking spaces. Because if a parking space is about 15 feet long and 10 feet wide, two of them is 30 by 10. So it is, his description of the physical space is right. Just missed the one zero. So it's, it sounds like your suggestion would still be, you know, even though it's 300 square feet, you're suggesting a half acre to be more in line with the state and federal rules?
Yes, because the biggest reason, again, it's not because I want to fill a wetland. That is absolutely the last thing on my mind. What is on my mind is, as we all know, permitting is already difficult enough. Having different targets at different levels is, 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 is the nightmarish part of doing this job. And then the other good thing about doing it this way is, is here's an unintended consequence of, of leaving it the way it is. Let's say that, first of all, I honestly, if it's not on the Vermont Wetlands map, your average person, especially if it's a hayfield or a lawn or something, they're not going to know it's a wetland. Honestly, there's, I mean, I've got, I know on my lawn, I've got areas that are holding water right now. But they don't, they won't in a week for the rest of the year. And that will qualify as a wetland. So are you going to have people that aren't even going to know they've got wetlands on their property? So, but that's not the point I was trying to make. The point I was trying to make is this. Let's say that somebody comes forth with an application and they have a wetland that is, it exceeds the 300 square feet. So let's say it's 400 square feet. Okay, they, it doesn't come under jurisdiction of the state. It is a self-reporting tool under Nationwide Permit Number 39. So the long and the short of it is, they're not going to have, they're going to get a delineation done. The Corps of Engineers is not going to come verify the delineation. The State of Vermont Wetlands Division is not going to come and verify the delineation. So the applicant comes forth and somebody at the DRB says, well, how do you know? Who verified the delineation? Because, let me back up. 99.99% of the time, when you have a delineation done, the state wetland biologist or your ecologist will come out and meet you and your wetland consultant. You'll walk the delineated line. Ultimately, there's some give and take. And the, the ecologist is typically, you know, the state's the boss. So they'll move the flags around and the flags will be put out. And then you'll call your surveyor to survey in the delineation. So my question is this. What is the DRB going to do in the instance where they want the delineation verified? Are they going, this is where I hope you don't go. I hope you don't go and say, well, the DRB reserves the right to hire a third party to go verify delineations. Because that, that just costs everybody too much money. So again, that's an unintended consequence of not having the same threshold as the state. Michael, your, your, your math was correct. But again, it's, we're, we're talking about Class III wetlands. And by the way, the, the other reason why the state stopped their jurisdiction over Class III wetlands is because, believe it or not, and again, this is science, they, they really don't start offering and holding the functions of a wetland until they get to a certain size. And the state has determined that size to be a half acre. So I think that you should, you should not only pay attention to me, but perhaps you should talk to some of the scientists at the state level and, and, you know, back up this, this ordinance by some science.
Yeah, thanks. Taylor, you had actually talked about the verification in some of our previous meetings. Did you, how did we wind up with that in there? I mean, he suggests not having the DRB hires on.
Uh, yeah. As, as written now, I mean, it really, it is on. Let me take it, let me take a step back. With, with Class 1 and Class 2, you know, the, the town's saying that they'll defer to the delineation that's okayed by the Vermont Agency Natural Resources. For Class 3, you know, the, the town's going to have to verify itself, or sorry, the city's going to have to verify itself. As Michael outlined, you know, a potential tool in the toolbox is to, is to do it due to developer and, and, you know, require the developer to pay for the city to hire a wetland biologist to, to verify that Class 3 wetland delineation. But, you know, if you're not going to do that, it's going to get the DRB or likely the ZA to, to verify that delineation.
Again, if it gets up to the, so what happens in reality? If, if you have a, a wetland that is close to a half acre, you're going to, you're going to have to have the state come out and check your verification because if it is, they're going to take jurisdiction.
Yeah, I'm, yeah. My advice for the, the South Burlington PC would, would be in line with what Mr. Bryan's saying is that I think, I think it would make a lot of sense to, to talk to ANR about the acreage or the square foot measurement. And to better understand, you know, what sort of square footage of wetlands, you know, sort of automatically starts to become a Class 3 just based on size, or sorry, a Class 2 just based on size. And that's something I think that we can certainly do in the next month or two.
One, one last point is, two last points before I get off of the, the, the Class 3 wetlands. If you want to see on a map what I'm referring to, if you were to go to the Vermont Environmental Atlas and then zero in, or any one of these tools available to you, or any of us, and zero in to South Burlington. And if you go to their menu and you go to, I think it's geology and you scroll down to hydro soils, you click that button, you will get a pretty good idea of why I'm concerned with with this. And what you'll see is, is that hydro, there's a lot of hydro soils throughout our municipality. And hydro soils is again, one of the three triggers of the definitions. But anyways, the other thing is, sticking with wetlands, I would also urge you to, to be more in line. I don't understand the decision. I know it's not a final decision, but the reasons why you would have a different length of buffer zone from a residential use than an industrial or commercial use. I believe the, the IC use is 50 feet and the residential use is 100 feet. I mean, I, I probably, it's probably because there are creatures, more creatures, i.e. human beings, that are around a residential use potentially than a commercial use. And maybe you're concerned about their using or encroaching recreationally or something on the wetland. But I'd like some feedback on to why there's, why the difference.
Do you want to, do you want to just get it from your point of view? Is that more of a technical question or more of a policy question?
Yeah, so you know, we were actually talking about increasing the buffer width citywide, you know, for water quality benefits and all those things, knowing that the 50-foot buffer often gets encroached on by mowing and, and other uses. And as part of that discussion, you know, we kind of started thinking, talking about city center specifically. Like, you know, that's an area where we've made a lot of policy decisions as a city to, you know, focus development in that particular area. You know, we felt like, you know, we wouldn't want to increase a buffer width in that area. You know, it just seemed like it didn't, it didn't match our, our kind of wider policies. And then based on some additional discussion, we decided that there were a few other zones, like the industrial open space zone, where that might not make sense either. So that's kind of how we got to what got put out for public comment, like, like you're talking about. So that there's, there's different buffer widths in, in different areas.
Michael, I, I see your comment and I would agree with that. It does offer protection. But I would also hope that you, as a board, would want to weigh the the consequences of not only our natural world, but our built world or to-be-built world. So again, I would urge you to, to keep them at 50 feet. But, but more importantly, probably as importantly, if not more importantly, as we all know, and, and I, I had the fortunate or unfortunate opportunity to go to Montpelier just before COVID hit to testify on this regards. And the, the subject basically was, should, should the wetland rules allow for stormwater treatment in their buffer zones? And one thing that we have to keep in mind, and I do know your ordinance addresses this and allows it under certain, certain circumstances, and I think that's great. And the reason is because, as we all know, water flows downhill. So I would urge you to A, look at the buffer zones and treat them all the same. But I would also urge you that if for some reason you're going to keep it at 100 feet, that at least you maybe open up the rules a bit that will allow for stormwater treatment within all of those buffers. And then, I don't want to take up the whole time, so two more, two more points that I'm going to bow out. I know that maintaining or the ability for folks to farm their land, especially if it is part of a PUD and becomes part of the open space, I think it's really important to be able to let people allow to continue farming. And as we, as I think you all know, farming is both regulated and allowed under the Vermont Wetland Rules. So my point is twofold. Don't handcuff the DRB so they, so they can't allow farming to continue in, whether it's Class 3 wetlands or the Class 2 buffers. And, and furthermore, this would take even a little more work. Don't handcuff the DRB's ability to allow farming to occur in open space in the future. What I mean by that is, there may be land now that is not currently being farmed or used for agriculture. It may be in the city's best interest for a variety of reasons to allow that in the future. And something sticks in my mind where I did see the word current farming uses. But my point is it should be current and future farming uses. So again, you don't, we don't end up with one of these unintended consequences where there's a Class 3 wetland that's 10 acres in size because it's a wet meadow currently being farmed. And all of a sudden, even though the state and the feds allow it, that it's, that not even the DRB could allow that practice to continue.
So this came up at our last meeting, actually. And Taylor, you had actually looked into the Class 3 wetlands and farming. I think it, it turned out that we didn't have jurisdiction over that, so.
Correct, you do not, it is not. So, you know, I'm assuming they continue to be able to exist where it is currently impacting wetlands. You know, in the, the few minutes of research that I did in regard to Class 3 wetlands and how the Army Corps treats Class 3 wetlands and farming is that, you know, essentially, the Army Corps says that, you know, existing farming and Class 3 wetlands can continue. But from what I read, it sounded like new farming would be subject to a permit. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be disbarred or disallowed in that Class 3 wetland, but it would just be subject to a permit. And certainly, I didn't, I didn't draft the regs in any ways to, to, require the DRB to, to prevent farming in, in wetlands. I, I think it's drafted in a, in a way that, you know, it just, you know, makes clear that the town doesn't have, sorry, the city does not have jurisdiction at all over farming. But we can look back, Patrick, and, and, you know, make that clearer if that's the desire of the PC.
Right, and Sarah, did you want to respond to the farming comment?
Not exactly, but this meeting is scheduled to be an hour and a quarter. And I think, you know, everybody's opinion matters. But we've just spent over a half an hour on one speaker. And there's at least a couple of people on this call that we don't normally hear from or see at meetings. And I think they ought to be given first option to say something in the remaining few minutes.
Sure, thank you, Sarah. Patrick, if that's okay, it would be nice to move on to hear from some other people as well. Who, who else would like to say some things? I know Jeff Nix up when I get, and Loretta and Frances, so. Oh goodness. So the, well, in order of how I'm seeing people on the screen here, it would be Jeff, Nick, Loretta and Frances. And, and I'm sorry about that. And I'm sorry about the time. I should have been keeping closer track. Jeff?
Hi, am I up, Jessica?
Yes, yes.
Thanks for holding this, this session. You know, we, we own the hill farm as most you know, and I've been following this as closely as I can. This has been challenging during COVID. At the very beginning, at one of the public hearings before COVID, I said that this kind of felt like a backdoor taking these regulations because they are very robust and probably the, the most robust I've seen in the entire state of Vermont. I look at a lot of these regulations in different towns. And as Patrick pointed out, they're somewhat contradictory and more robust than the state of the feds sometimes. And I was assured at that time, well, this is not a backdoor taking, but I, I'm still not convinced of that. As I look at these maps and the interactive map I'm looking at here, you know, between habitats and, and buffer zones. And there's other blue dots that show up on the interactive map that I've never seen before, but maybe this is a more robust mapping system I'm looking at, but there's littered with little blue dots where I know that I think they, I don't know, but I think they're referring to wetlands. I know there's no wetlands in these places. So I'm just curious as to how do you cure the problems in the mapping system? And, and for the life of me, I don't understand why there's a big buffer area along the interstate unless it's put there to prevent Exit 12B someday. And so I think, you know, I'd rather not see a map go out that you have to then hire experts to determine that the mapping's incorrect. Because then you're just going to set yourself up with an argument for the folks that want to keep the map the way it is when the boundary lines were not correct in the first place. I mean, that's just, you know, setting yourself up for endless appeals. If somebody wants to take issue to one expert's analysis and then the map that's in place. So, you know, I, I don't, I hope that this doesn't end up where, you know, again, the unintended consequences are that if it's not correct coming out of the gate, you're going to set yourself with arguments and legal issues moving forward because everybody's disagreeing with the way the mapping's laid out. So does, can anybody here just, what are those blue dots all about?
So some of the, yeah, and you know, with the interactive map, you can actually like turn layers on and off and see which ones they are. They may be little steep slope areas. And I mean, we would. So you can, in the interactive map, you can turn on and off all the individual layers and see which ones they are. And you know, as it came up earlier, different resources are delineated in different ways. So in, in some cases, they, it's approximate mapping. You know, I think wetlands is a good example of that. The state has an approximate map. And then, you know, the actual, when there's changes or an application, it would be on the ground delineation. So, you know, we do acknowledge that, you know, that's the best mapping we have. And in some of the resources, it is approximate.
Well, if, if that's the case, I would recommend that you just put in language in this document moving forward that these maps are, you know, not entirely accurate.
And we can.
The public understands that. It doesn't take them at face value. And, you know, there are a couple of other things.
That's a, sorry, Jeff. Jessica, either now or later, it'd be good to have a statement that clarifies that because it is very clear in the map where there is a definitive, where the line is the line is the line. And then for certain resources, it's following another, another field delineation requirement that defines the line. So differentiating those two. Yeah, nothing, nothing is unintentional in the map. It's, it's clear, but maybe to that point, yeah.
We can go through that at our next meeting and really make sure that that's cleared in the minutes.
Okay. I mean, there, there's some other things I picked up along, along the way. I mean, I'm looking at habitat block language and is it the March 11th? Are they the most recent standards that are out there? But I'm, I'm looking at habitat block, and this was a new one that popped up as of March 11th, describing contiguous forestated and adjacent unmanaged shrubby areas of old field, young forest and unmanaged wetlands. As the marked on the natural resources map, well, that could be what I'm looking at on our land. Which is not true. They're not wetlands, but they appear to be on this map. And, and that's just, I mean, you could, half the city would be unable to be developed if, if those standards are, are to be met. I mean, that's a, a pretty broad definition of habitat block. Extremely broad in my mind. So I'd be a little nervous if, you know, you, you, on one hand, you say, we want to see responsive development. But the other hand, you're saying if it's unmanaged hayfield, you can't develop it because it's a habitat. That's, that's a little shocking if you're, if you're, you know, in the development business or, or trying to follow the rules and the rules are so robust that you're, you know, unable to, to do anything without, you know, having, again, endless, endless appeals. If you think you're following the rules and somebody takes issue with the definition, you're setting yourself up for a long permit timetable here. So those are my initial thoughts, but I'll, I'll get something in writing to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Loretta Marriott, you are next. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So just to, you know, familiarize myself with the map and all, you know, I was reading Article 12, which I could read pretty easily. And the map, I did have some difficulty with it, but I focused down on some areas that I'm familiar with. And so I had, which was easier for me to, you know, manage. I had a question. According to the CCRP, there's two new South Burlington roads planned. One across Potash Brook, which was called the Tilly Drive Extension and one beside Potash Brook that would go from Tilly Drive to the airport. I wonder if they've been approved already. No, we don't know about that.
Well, so.
Are, are you referencing the, the draft of the ID9 study?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So, so those roads haven't been approved by anyone. Those roads, if they were ever constructed, would need to receive approval by the South Burlington DRB. I'm not working on the ID9 study, so I, I could look more into that. What exactly the study is saying in regards to those two roads. But at present, those, those two roads are not approved by anyone.
I think there may be more progress on one of them, Taylor. Didn't we get an update on that?
Unless South Burlington DRB has, has approved that, and I, I'm just not aware of, of that. I,
I believe the connector road, not towards the airport, but the northern or southern one may, it's not a planning commission element. I believe that one may have had more progress.
So what I would, what I would recommend is I would recommend just forwarding the question to Paul and whomever in the planning office to, to get back to Loretta about whether, what roads have been approved by the DRB recently and what happened.
So then, then the question becomes, you know, the, the road that would be the Tilly Drive Extension over to Community Drive goes right through a wetland and across Potash Brook, which is impaired. And so is that the kind of thing that this plan, the updated plan, does that, is that permitted with that? You know, some of this, you know, there's the protected areas now and the new protected areas. And I'm just wondering where, you know, this road, you know, well, the Article 12 says you can make a road if it's necessary. And certainly, you know, a persuasive person can, you know, make a good argument that pavement is necessary. So I'm wondering how, you know, this road through a wetland fits into your, your update.
I want to just, I'm sorry to be, I want to make sure that we're not talking about a plan here. We're talking about regulations. And so we're not, we're not talking about a policy document. We're talking about rules. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. In terms of, of, and when we're talking about the South Burlington regs and we're talking about the ID9 study, we're talking about a plan, we're talking about a policy document. Here, Loretta, the direct answer to your question would be in Section 1203. And that would be subsection D under D4 restricted infrastructure encroachment. So it would be possible for that roadway to be built as long as it complied with that rule. That rule provides that there is restriction in terms of, of roadway or paved roadway width of 20 feet. That's very narrow for a road. And then also that there is appropriate ability for wildlife passage through culverts. And there also is a referral to the full restricted infrastructure encroachment section, which is in Section 1210. And all those rules also would need to be complied with.
So Laura, I actually don't know, and I don't have it in front of us. It's actually not what we're talking about today in the, whether or not those roads are on the official map or not. And I think that that's where it comes into play. So, so if those roads are on the official map, then, you know, I think they would make, make the criteria that he just referred to, and the road would, you know, be able to be built within those standards. As far as I know, they're not on the official map and they're only showing up in that study. And that's something that I think we want to check back with and make sure we're getting you the right information. So, you know, I think kind of the bigger point on this is that this is an area where our current rules are much more stringent than our existing rules. You know, our existing rules don't have that specific criteria on, you know, kind of how important the road needs to be to be allowed to be built in a wetland. So they are different. Duncan?
Yeah, I, I just pulled up the official map and it looks like the one that connects from Tilly Drive through to, what's the, the circle there? That, that is on the official map. And there is a road going about through that field to, over to, I forget the name of the road that goes through there. It looks like they may be on the official map. If I'm looking.
Yeah, Kevin Dorn did confirm, and it must have been in a related conversation, Kevin Dorn did confirm that those two roads are on the official map. And I think he's the one that also updated, I don't know where I was, but updated that one of them, I think, has more progress than the other. But again, something to confirm with him.
Yeah. So did that answer your question, Loretta?
Thank you.
Okay. Frances, you are next.
Okay. I think, I think I'm on. And what I wanted to do is just make some observations about the procedures that the planning commission used in their assessment of the forest habitat blocks. The blocks were reviewed on the, in some working sessions on September 29th and October 13th. And I, I was disappointed and surprised that the, the way they were evaluated, a buffer was used, but the buffer was actually subtracted from the original block. And typically, for example, for wetlands, buffers are added. And also in stream delineation, the buffers are added. And what the intent of the buffer is, is to increase the value of the protected area. And I really thought that in the discussions of the habitat blocks, by subtracting this buffer, we were reducing the value of the block. And often using the buffer rather than a protection, we were using it as a tool for removing sections that were identified. And I, I think that oftentimes when evaluating those buffers, it was a question of, is this likely to affect development? And if it was not likely to affect development, then the buffer was retained. But if the land was suitable for development, then the buffer was removed. And in that evaluation, you spent a lot of time on both of those days, looked at 20 different habitat blocks that were identified by Arrowood. And in nine of them, sections were removed to allow for development. And in 11, no changes were made. And oftentimes when changes were not made, there were some other protections such as steep slopes and wetlands also associated with it. And just to kind of look at three different blocks, the one at 1720 and 1730 Spear Street, which is between South Point and South Village. The, the, the buffer was identified in light green and the core was identified in a dark green. And in the, in that case of the 1720, 1730 Spear Street, that light green forested area was removed, even though it, it has forest and dense undergrowth. And there's a proposed development there of 49 homes. On the wheel of property and the bordering up to the hill farm, some of those light green areas, which were trees and shrubs, were really removed just to straighten a demarcation. And in the third one, Meadowland, another light green area or, or buffer area, which shows on the map or the, the base map as shrub and, and a little forest area. That one was also removed. But in that case, and then a couple others, it looked like the base map is not accurate. Because in the Meadowland area, when I drove down there and looked at it, all the trees had been removed. And all the stumps have been removed and it's really just a grassland. And there was another spot that I looked at on, near Sadie Lane, where there's houses that don't show on the, on the base maps. But anyway, I think during those discussions, I really felt that the commissioners were, were advocating for development rather than in the protection of habitat and open space. And I felt it was contrary to the intent of interim zoning, where the city really paused development to kind of identify important areas and protect them. So that's what I had. Thank you.
Jessica, we can't hear you.
We're over time by 11 minutes already. I want to make sure we're not missing anyone else who wanted to speak. Okay, I'm not hearing, seeing any other notes. Jeff? Jeff Nick?
Thanks. Just, I was on the interactive map, clicking on the layers of. Thanks. Just, I was on the interactive map, clicking on the layers and off the layers. And those light blue dots don't, are not removed any, for any, any clicks. They just stay there. And looking at the light blue elsewhere on this map, they appear to be in the drainage ditch areas for the most part. But on our land, it's around, a lot of it around the house site of the old barn, which have all been removed now. And I know there's no wetlands there. So how do you go about correct, what's the process to correct the map, I guess?
Unless it's a habitat block or a habitat block connector, everything else is either field delineated or state data. So it would be, you know, in actuality governed by like the data source. So in the mapping, the only mapping that's like set by the city and the line is the line are the, the level one resources of the habitat block and the habitat connector. So a lot, some of that other data is approximate, especially the wetlands, the steep slopes. Like we were talking about earlier, the delineation of those varies by resource. And we can actually go back and look at which resource it is and how it's delineated. So it may be that the map is not accurate for one of those resources and it's showing up strangely.
But we can correct that ourselves moving forward?
Yeah, and especially, you know, with what you're saying, I mean, maybe it is one of the steep slopes that mapped strangely in one of those areas, you know, especially if it's showing up in like drainage areas. Maybe it's getting like the side of a drainage, like a small steep area or something. So, and we can look at that with you offline to try to make sure we understand what you're looking at.
Yeah, and the, and the other, so the habitat blocks and the forested blocks, are those correctable because they don't follow the edge of the forest in all of the sites on our land? And then that wide area along the interstate is curious to me. I think it's, what is it? It's the, it appears to be a buffer of some sort, but it's rather wide. And I'm not sure what, I don't, there's no stream over there, so I'm not sure what it's buffering.
Yeah, so the habitat blocks are, you know, the way that we've set them up in the regulation is that the, the line is the line as shown on the maps. And, you know, if we get to the end of, you know, this period and adopt them, that's, that's the line. It's the only kind of reference, you know, it's not, it's not a field delineated item. But within our regulations, there are some ways to adjust it during like an application process where, you know, you could on your maps to the DRB say, you know, we want to adjust this line one way or the other to kind of better suit the land or better match the habitat. I think it makes sense that you should probably read through that section and see how it could be adjusted. The idea with that section or with the habitat blocks is that we would retain the total square footage of a habitat block. But, you know, like you're saying, if there's an area that's right now more of a grassy land, but you have another adjacent area that's more forested, I mean, you could do a, an adjustment of that line to better follow the edge of the forest as part of the application. Under those, I think it's five different kind of methods of doing that adjustment. Because we do know that the, you know, it wasn't field delineated. So it's not a perfect edge of forested area, which is why it's called a habitat block. And the definition includes some of those other land cover types. Because it's not a, it's not a straight delineation of forest.
Okay, and I know we just removed some invasive species that were on the edges of the forest block. But you want those, so we removed them. And that may be why this blue is showing up because it's probably not considered, you know, not habitat or forested block because the invasive species from the edges of the fields were removed. So, but does this, are you going to redo this map in any way or not?
Well, we actually just heard some comments from Frances. We might be getting some other public comment. So I think the idea is that at the end of, you know, when we send something to city council, that would be our recommendation. But I mean, I suppose if you had a recommendation that you wanted us to look at, we could entertain a comment related to it.
Well, if you just, if you just click off the layer, you'll see that the far, you know, it extends into the meadow in a couple of places here. So just by not following the edge of the forest, you're broadening the habitat block with a forest block.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's some questions about the mapping on your, your area. So maybe we could take a look with you.
And then the one, one final question, at one point, I think I addressed the planning commission at one Zoom meeting. But are you allowing for private ownership of these habitat blocks? I mean, in terms of a residential project, could there be a half acre lot where the owner of the lot owns the edge of the, the forest block?
No, I know you had commented on this before. We hadn't made a change since then. And Taylor, just, if you're still on, maybe you can confirm. I, I think that the level one resources would not be split up so that there would be a piece on individual properties. It would be a jointly owned.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable answering that myself just because I have not been a part of the conversation at all regarding any revisions to the subdivision regulations, to the PD regulations.
Yeah.
So I, I, yeah, I think that that question's best answered by Paul or by Sharon Murray or whomever has been working on, on those regulations, separate from my focus on the environmental protection standards.
Yeah.
It just seems like, I mean, that seems like a taking there. I mean, it just seems, you know, all of Vermont is forested land. It's in private ownership. And all of a sudden, in one instance, the regs change and you're going to say, no, no more. We're not going to do this anymore. But, you know, I don't understand what the, what the harm is in a half acre, you know. I mean, I think all of us probably live in a place where you own some woods and you own some, your, how your house and gardens are. And then you own some woodlands and it's not a, not a, not a big lot. It's a, you know, not a, not a five acre swath, but you know, half the lot's wooded and be a perfect opportunity to provide that for homeownership. Anyway, seems a little excessive to me.
Great. Any, any other comments? I know we're over. Okay, well, I guess hearing none, we will be addressing some of the written comments we've received to be able to try to have some answers back for those questions. And if anyone has anything else, you can continue to submit more information or comments or questions up until the 20th. Right, so I think, I think that is, is everything for today. Thank you for attending.
Thank you all. Thanks, Jessica.